Is there anybody else who would like to speak on the main motion before Senator Palacios closes? Vice Speaker, you're recognized.
Madam Speaker, thank you for this opportunity. I've distributed a proposed amendment to D. I hope everybody has it. It has my name and Senator Palacios on the top. The language that's here is language similar to the one that the university has, where they have in the House Counsel. And it was my intent, and I thought the intent of the -- it was our intent to try to figure out a way to assure that it's in-house counsel and not privately retained counsel from the outside. And so we tried to utilize the university's model language, which has worked for 20-some And so I proffered it. I know that there have been numbers that have looked at it and still think that it may be -- it may have a loophole where there's an opening for the ability to hire outside counsel, but in writing this, I specifically deleted the language in the university language that allows them to hire private counsel and tried as much as possible to utilize just the language for in-house counsel. But I stand to be corrected if this isn't tight enough that everybody agrees. Thank you.
So the amendment here proffered then by the Vice Speaker and Senator Palacios, if you look at it, that's on page three, which will be then to delete lines nine to 19 and replace it with this new language. On the amendment, no objections to the amendment? Mr. Vice Speaker, you still have the floor.
Madam Speaker, I apologize as Chairman of the Committee for releasing a bill that I probably should have worked on a little harder to try to correct. If the body would not object, I'd like to ask that this be referred back to my committee so that I can work on it.
On that motion without any objections, so ordered. Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Speaker. Moving on, on Bill number 272-31, Mr. Vice Speaker, that's your bill.
I'd like to move that Bill 272-31 replaced in third reading, and I'd like for a short opportunity to speak.
You may proceed.
Madam Speaker, Bill 272 was introduced to address a problem that many of us have seen over the last several years with board members enriching themselves by having the government agency for which they are sitting on the board either purchase material from them, do business with them, do things to affect their financial interest. The first draft of Bill 272 that I sent out, I thought addressed the concerns that had been brought to my attention and the concerns that I wanted to address, and that was to preclude members of boards and commissions, regardless of which board and commission, any and all members of boards and commissions within the government of Guam, to be able to enrich themselves by doing business with their companies, whether or not they did or did not participate in the discussion. It has been pointed out to me that the way that I had originally written the legislation may not have satisfied or met the intent that I had originally tried to meet. And so I have circulated an amendment, which I'd like to profit to replace the one paragraph that is currently there. Madam Speaker, the language that I'm utilizing in the proposed amendment actually comes from 5GCA in the procurement statute, which speaks to the issue of -- it's on Section 5632 restrictions as it relates to present and former employees of the government and disqualification of business when an employee has a financial interest. The way the statute currently reads for employees is that "disqualification of business when an employee has financial interest. It shall be a breach of ethical standards for a business in which an employee has a financial interest knowingly to act as a principal or as an agent for anyone other than the territory in connection with any of the claims, in which an employee either participates personally and substantially through decision, approval, disapproval, recommendation, the rendering of advice, investigation or otherwise to which the subject of the employee's official responsibility or the territory is a party or has a direct substantial interest." Trying to build on that, I have introduced an amendment which states as follows that -- and I'll read it as I have it originally, and then I will make a further amendment as has been recommended. I have, as underlined, I've taken out some language in 272 as you have it in front of you, and I've underlined the new section that I would like to amend it with, and it says, "shall be permanently disqualified from acting on any matter in which he is a principal, has a financial interest in, or acts as an agent for anyone other than the government of Guam. The member shall be prohibited," I mean disqualified, "from influencing any determination made by the board or commission on which the member serves and in which the member either participates personally and substantially through decision, approval, disapproval, recommendation, the rendering of advice, investigation or otherwise, or which the subject of the member's official responsibility or the government of Guam is a party or has an interest and a substantial interest." And so it has been recommended that the -- that rather than use the word disqualified, which I took from the employee section, the recommendation is that it might be stronger if we strike disqualified and instead use prohibited. I'm still trying to toy with the language, Madam Speaker, and I'm hoping that as the members get up and discuss this amendment and this proposed public law, that we will make this much stronger. I think all of you understand the intent that I'm trying to address and the self-enrichment of board members in violation of their ethical standards as members of boards and commissions, what we're trying to address. But I offered the amendment, and I'm hoping for the support of my colleagues in, one, improving the language, and, two, the eventual passage of Bill 272, to make sure that members of boards and commissions -- I know it sounds like it's self-evident, that members of boards and commissions should not violate any ethical code by enriching themselves, by participating in discussions or doing anything that's going to enrich them by their actions on these boards and commissions. The unfortunate fact is, is that many boards and commissions we've seen where members of the boards have participated in decisions and have enriched themselves. And so I wish we didn't have to pass legislation like this, but unfortunately, we're having to do it to make sure that it's very clear to everybody that sits on boards and commissions that you don't get on a board and commission that does business with the entity that you're going to be sitting on the board so that you can somehow influence from within the board or influence from on the board to the procuring members, I mean the officials within the department, to buy from you or from the company that you're a principal of. And in fact, in the -- at the end of 272, I keep the language that interests held in blind trust shall not exempt from -- be exempt from this provision. So I'll answer any questions anybody has if it's not clear what I'm intending. And as it relates to the boards and commissions, it's all boards and commissions. I'm not going to list all of them. I know that I've only listed two or three on this, but again, I stand ready if the members feel that we have to list the boards and commissions. My fear is that if I start listing most of them, that if I left any out, statutory construction would mean that I intended to leave them out, but I have specifically included the beginning of the section, including but not limited to the boards that I've listed, which I intend to mean every single board and commission for which this legislator appointed and confirmed, appointed by the governor without our confirmation, or any board and commission that -- within the government of Guam. Thank you.
Before you sit, Mr. Vice Speaker, there is two sections, I mean two lines down, where the member shall be disqualified to also put prohibited as well? You have it for the very first one, shall be permanently prohibited, then the next sentence, the member shall be also disqualified.
Correct.
So prohibited as well.
Both disqualifications, the recommendation by other members is that that should read prohibited rather than disqualified.
Okay.
And I think that -- I think I agree, that prohibited is a stronger language. So on the first line of the -- first three words of the proposed amendment, shall be prohibited, and then on the third line of the amendment, shall be prohibited, rather than using the word disqualified.
Thank you. So on the amendment, you recognize Senator Blas?
Um.
Oh, the motion, okay. So on the amendment first, which is the Vice Speaker's?
Yeah. May I speak?
You will? Okay.
Just a question the author would yield to. In the amendment, on that first line, are we striking the word permanently as well? Or is it, are we going to keep the word permanently there?
There, it would be permanently prohibited is the language.
Well, if -- because if the amendment is to strike out the word, because I just heard shall be prohibited, I didn't hear permanently prohibited.
Oh, no. It's only to change disqualified to prohibited on both.
Okay. Then I think if that be the case, then we dispose of the motion. I mean, to this amendment, then I would speak on the motion.
Okay. Thank you. Senator Guthers, on the amendment?
Yes, you're able to do that one time.
Madam Speaker, I would like to amend the amendment.
And you want to share with us what?
Yes. I'd like to share with you what I would like to do and --
Wait, wait.
For point of order, I think that actually it's to amend the amendment to the amendment, because this is an amendment, and then he's amending the amendment.
Okay. That's great.
No, when he put it on, he wanted to --
But we're dealing with, he wanted to deal with the amendment.
Yes.
This is an amendment.
Okay.
Then he's amending the amendment, and now she's amending the amendment to the amendment.
No, because I thought when he provided both of them at the same time, meaning this is one amendment, not as a separate piece of an amendment. So we can go ahead and we'll do the prohibited first then. So on the amendment, to accept then the -- to delete disqualified on two lines and to replace it with prohibited?
No.
No objections? So ordered. Okay. So now then we have an amendment that has been amended. Now the language is shall be permanently prohibited, the member shall be prohibited, and all others stand. So on that amendment then, Senator Frank Blas.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I have, well, with regards to the line there says shall be permanently prohibited, my concern there is the utilization of the word permanently. Permanently could mean forever and ever. Now, I understand, if I can, if I understand the legislation as proposed, you know, I can understand with regards to while the individual is serving as a board member or serving in the capacity that is related to the entity, but what happens with five to 10 years down the road, when this individual is no longer a part of it? Are we then, by the utilization of the word permanently, are then we, is this to be construed as this individual can never be able to provide services or be part of procurement process?
Would you like the Vice Speaker to yield to the questions? Vice Speaker, do you yield?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I do yield, and I apologize again. The good Senator Ada, who made the proposal of the disqualification being prohibited, did recommend that permanently also be struck, and I think that's why he had his hand up, was it would probably be better if we struck both.
Okay, so.
The word permanently in that first one and the prohibited in the, I mean disqualified in the second. I believe that was the way that he wanted, so that we could address the concerns that Senator Blas has.
You're right. We will, and he still has the floor, and he wants to make that.
So I'd like to move to make him to strike the word permanently from.
Okay. So on that amendment then, to delete the word permanently, Senator Tom Ada, you'd like to speak on that?
Madam Speaker, I would support the --
Madam Speaker, I would, I would support the amendment to delete the word permanently. However, I think it would be appropriate, then, I think the intention is, for as long as that individual's on the board, that prohibition should be applicable. So, maybe what might resolve the issue, then, is that at the end of this amendment, probably we should put in the language that says, said prohibition shall be applicable during the tenure of the member on the board or commission.
We're going to take a 29-second recess. Second session. Senator Blas, you still have the floor, then? Is there anything else you'd like to add to? Okay, so then, any objections to the deletion of the word permanently? No objections? So ordered. Thank you. I have next, then, on the list, was Senator Guthers.
Okay, Madam Speaker, this is what I think is missing about the amendment. So, this is my amendment to the amendment. And I'll pass out copies after I state it, and, because I may need a little help on the language from legal counsel, but this is the concept. Adding to the amendment would be this language. The board and commission members are further prohibited from doing any business activity, including the selling of goods or services, consulting work, or negotiation work with the department, agency, or instrumentality that he or she has oversight of as a board or commission member throughout the duration of his or her service on the board or commission. Furthermore, no commercial business or entity the board or commission member has a financial interest in shall be allowed to do business with the department, agency, or instrumentality that the board or commission member is a member of throughout this period.
I'm going to tell you, what? That's a very long amendment, and you're right, it's going to take some time to do.
It's here.
I'm going to ask Mr. Majority Leader to make a motion, if we can put this aside, move on, working on the amendment, and we can proceed with other bills. Mr. Vice Speaker?
Madam Speaker, if I might ask for the indulgence of the body again, and ask that we pass this bill, and, I mean, not pass it, but set it to the side, and let me and my staff work on it. Thank you.
On that motion, then, without any objections, so ordered. Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Speaker. You will not lose, the bill will not lose its place on the agenda. We're going to move on to Bill Number 292, and I recognize the author, Senator Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move to place Bill 292-31 on the third reading file, and be allowed to discuss.
Senators, please. All attention to Senator Rodriguez on his bill. He may proceed, Senator.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill 292 is an act to authorize the community health centers of the Department of Public Health and Social Services to obtain reimbursement for services rendered to medically indigent program patients. The northern and southern regional community health centers are federally qualified health centers that are mandated to collect revenues from third-party payers such as private insurance indemnities, Medicare, Medicaid, medically indigent program, and self-pay patients, so that the revenues or program income generated are to be used exclusively for the operation of the Guam Community Health Centers. The federal health center program requirement states, health centers must have documented billing and collection policies and procedures in place to maximize reimbursement. This provision includes strict requirements that health centers must bill Medicare, Medicaid, child health insurance program, and any other applicable public or private third-party payers. The MIP is a third-party payer. However, local statute, as provided in 10 GCA, Chapter 2, Article 9, states, the medically indigent program shall not reimburse public health for services provided by public health programs. This provision has been interpreted to mean that the community health centers cannot submit claims to the MIP program for the reimbursement of the cost of services rendered. This is resulting in a continually diminishing balance in the community health center revolving fund, and is directly contrary to the federal statutory provisions applicable to the community health center grant award. The MIP program has for many years been facing financial shortfalls. However, the consequences of continually not coming into compliance of the community health center grant award puts in jeopardy the funding the northern and southern health centers receives in federal funding. Moreover, the greater consequence this legislation hopes to avert is the termination of the community health center services to MIP patients from receiving primary health care and ancillary services. In FY 2011, the community health centers serviced over 35,000 users. Of that, 12,495 were MIP. The cost for MIP patient visits ranges between $42.78 to $89.98 per visit. The potential impact of MIP program would be around 534,000 to about 1.1 million. Just as private clinics claim reimbursement for services rendered to MIP patients, the community health centers should also be able to do the same to ensure sufficient resources can be made available to uphold the demand for health care services at these community health centers, and more importantly, it will allow the community health centers to come into compliance with federal mandates applicable to the grant award. And so, I ask my colleagues, Madam Speaker, to please support this legislative effort that's been requested by the community health centers in order to keep the revolving fund intact, and to ensure that it doesn't end up where we deplete the community health centers fund, and put in jeopardy, more importantly, put in jeopardy the loss of federal funding because we are not in compliance with the mandates. So, thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
On the motion, I recognize Senator Blas.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, Madam Speaker, I'd love to be able to rise in support of the legislation. There is just a concern that I've got, and I appreciate the, you know, the presentations provided by the author of the legislation with regards to the intent of the bill, and I agree with it. I think that, you know, if we have the community health centers, and they are providing the services that we should be able to, and they are providing the services to those clients under the MIP program, that there should be the reimbursement. I'm just a bit concerned, though, if you look on page four, starting on line five, Section 2912.10, services provided by public health. The way the language is written here is a little bit ambiguous, and it may not, I don't believe that it's going to serve the purpose here, because if you read this, first off, it says generally, and I kind of question why we need to use that word, generally. The medically indigent program shall not reimburse public health for services provided by public health, provided, however, services provided and rendered by the regional community health centers for the Department of Public Health for medical, dental, laboratory, shall be reimbursed at a fee scheduled rates established pursuant to applicable laws, rules, and regulations. My concern, one of my concerns here is that, while I see where we're trying to identify that, and permit them to be able to do this, I don't think that that language necessarily does that, because where it says shall be reimbursed at a fee, it says shall be, but where it says up here, you can't, you can't use the MIP, but they shall be reimbursed, where is that going to come from? And so, I guess my question here, with regards to, you know, where, what, where we're referencing, or what are we alluding to, as to who's going to, who's going to reimburse if it's not going to be reimbursed from the MIP, but we would like MIP to do this? If, do we want MIP to reimburse them or not? That's a simple question. And so, maybe with that, I know the author of this legislation can yield to that, so that we can, I can understand the makeup and the construct of this, of this, of this section here, and the amendments proposed, to see, are we going to, are we authorizing the payments to come from MIP, or if not, where is it coming from?
Senator, do you yield to the question?
Yes, Madam Speaker, and thank you. I'm going to answer it, and I think, I hope I can answer the question. The original language now that's here that says, the medically indigent program shall not reimburse public health for services provided by public health programs, is currently what's on the books. And my understanding of this, Madam Speaker, is that this was put in place there because of some specific services, discrete services, that were, you know, that were provided by the, by public health, such as HIV testing, and I don't know what the other services are, and so, that will remain free of charge. And so, you know, they won't be able to claim or charge for those services. And so, that's why we've indicated here specifically what, you know, services, what we mean by services provided, that now the community health centers will be able to, to claim for reimbursements. And this was, and these, and these were questions brought up during the public hearing, and in the committee report, this is something that public health had also had addressed and answered.
Senator?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I appreciate the response from the author. My concern there, and I, then, it goes to question as to why we have on line nine of page four, and other health-related services, et cetera, et cetera, same as generally. What do we mean? Are we, are we, are we being broad enough that it then is going to, it's going to allow for that to occur? And I can see where the concerns are with regards to the restrictions. And I think that can be best served if we can, if we state that the MIP program shall reimburse the region health centers if they're providing services for medical, dental, laboratory, X-ray, and pharmacy. If that is where we want to restrict it to, then let's restrict it. But if we keep continuing, we have, and other health-related services, et cetera, et cetera, can be construed as those other services that are already provided for free. Can we take a one-minute break?
Okay. 31 seconds for you.
Thirty-two seconds. Thank you. Madam Speaker, I appreciate the, the response from, from the author.
My concern there, and I, it, then, it goes to question as to why we have on line nine of page four, "And other health-related services, et cetera." Et cetera, same as generally. What do we mean? Are we, are we, are we being broad enough that it then is going to, it's going to allow for that to occur? And I can see where the concerns are with regards to the restrictions. And I think that can be best served if we can, if we state that, "The MIP program shall reimburse the, the, the regional health centers if they're providing services for medical, dental, laboratory, X-ray, and pharmacy." If that is where we want to restrict it to, then let's restrict it. But if we keep continuing, we have, and other health-related services, et cetera, et cetera can be, can be construed as those other services that are already provided for free. Can we take a one-minute break?
Okay. Thirty-one seconds for you.
Thirty-two seconds. Thank you, Madam Speaker, I appreciate the, the response from, from the author. My concern there, and I, it, then, it goes to question as to why we have on line nine of page four, "And other health-related services, et cetera." Et cetera, same as generally. What do we mean? Are we, are we, are we being broad enough that it then is going to, it's going to allow for that to occur? And I can see where the concerns are with regards to the restrictions. And I think that can be best served if we can, if we state that, "The MIP program shall reimburse the, the, the regional health centers if they're providing services for medical, dental, laboratory, X-ray, and pharmacy." If that is where we want to restrict it to, then let's restrict it. But if we keep continuing, we have, and other health-related services, et cetera, et cetera can be, can be construed as those other services that are already provided for free.
Can we take a one-minute break?
Okay. Thirty-one seconds for you.
Thirty-two seconds. Thank you, Madam Speaker, I appreciate the, the response from, from the author. My concern there, and I, it, then, it goes to question as to why we have on line nine of page four, "And other health-related services, et cetera." Et cetera, same as generally. What do we mean? Are we, are we, are we being broad enough that it then is going to, it's going to allow for that to occur? And I can see where the concerns are with regards to the restrictions. And I think that can be best served if we can, if we state that, "The MIP program shall reimburse the, the, the regional health centers if they're providing services for medical, dental, laboratory, X-ray, and pharmacy." If that is where we want to restrict it to, then let's restrict it. But if we keep continuing, we have, and other health-related services, et cetera, et cetera can be, can be construed as those other services that are already provided for free.
Can we take a one-minute break?
Okay. Thirty-one seconds for you.
Thirty-two seconds. Thank you, Madam Speaker, I appreciate the, the response from, from the author. My concern there, and I, it, then, it goes to question as to why we have on line nine of page four, "And other health-related services, et cetera." Et cetera, same as generally. What do we mean? Are we, are we, are we being broad enough that it then is going to, it's going to allow for that to occur? And I can see where the concerns are with regards to the restrictions. And I think that can be best served if we can, if we state that, "The MIP program shall reimburse the, the, the regional health centers if they're providing services for medical, dental, laboratory, X-ray, and pharmacy." If that is where we want to restrict it to, then let's restrict it. But if we keep continuing, we have, and other health-related services, et cetera, et cetera can be, can be construed as those other services that are already provided for free.
Can we take a one-minute break?
Okay. Thirty-one seconds for you.
Thirty-two seconds. Thank you, Madam Speaker, I appreciate the, the response from, from the author. My concern there, and I, it, then, it goes to question as to why we have on line nine of page four, "And other health-related services, et cetera." Et cetera, same as generally. What do we mean? Are we, are we, are we being broad enough that it then is going to, it's going to allow for that to occur? And I can see where the concerns are with regards to the restrictions. And I think that can be best served if we can, if we state that, "The MIP program shall reimburse the, the, the regional health centers if they're providing services for medical, dental, laboratory, X-ray, and pharmacy." If that is where we want to restrict it to, then let's restrict it. But if we keep continuing, we have, and other health-related services, et cetera, et cetera can be, can be construed as those other services that are already provided for free.
Can we take a one-minute break?
Okay. Thirty-one seconds for you.
Thirty-two seconds. Thank you, Madam Speaker, I appreciate the, the response from, from the author. My concern there, and I, it, then, it goes to question as to why we have on line nine of page four, "And other health-related services, et cetera." Et cetera, same as generally. What do we mean? Are we, are we, are we being broad enough that it then is going to, it's going to allow for that to occur? And I can see where the concerns are with regards to the restrictions. And I think that can be best served if we can, if we state that, "The MIP program shall reimburse the, the, the regional health centers if they're providing services for medical, dental, laboratory, X-ray, and pharmacy." If that is where we want to restrict it to, then let's restrict it. But if we keep continuing, we have, and other health-related services, et cetera, et cetera can be, can be construed as those other services that are already provided for free.
Can we take a one-minute break?
Okay. Thirty-one seconds for you.
Thirty-two seconds. Thank you, Madam Speaker, I appreciate the, the response from, from the author. My concern there, and I, it, then, it goes to question as to why we have on line nine of page four, "And other health-related services, et cetera." Et cetera, same as generally. What do we mean? Are we, are we, are we being broad enough that it then is going to, it's going to allow for that to occur? And I can see where the concerns are with regards to the restrictions. And I think that can be best served if we can, if we state that, "The MIP program shall reimburse the, the, the regional health centers if they're providing services for medical, dental, laboratory, X-ray, and pharmacy." If that is where we want to restrict it to, then let's restrict it. But if we keep continuing, we have, and other health-related services, et cetera, et cetera can be, can be construed as those other services that are already provided for free.
Can we take a one-minute break?
Okay. Thirty-one seconds for you.
Thirty-two seconds. Thank you, Madam Speaker, I appreciate the, the response from, from the author. My concern there, and I, it, then, it goes to question as to why we have on line nine of page four, "And other health-related services, et cetera." Et cetera, same as generally. What do we mean? Are we, are we, are we being broad enough that it then is going to, it's going to allow for that to occur? And I can see where the concerns are with regards to the restrictions. And I think that can be best served if we can, if we state that, "The MIP program shall reimburse the, the, the regional health centers if they're providing services for medical, dental, laboratory, X-ray, and pharmacy." If that is where we want to restrict it to, then let's restrict it. But if we keep continuing, we have, and other health-related services, et cetera, et cetera can be, can be construed as those other services that are already provided for free.
Can we take a one-minute break?
Okay. Thirty-one seconds for you.
Thirty-two seconds. Thank you, Madam Speaker, I appreciate the, the response from, from the author. My concern there, and I, it, then, it goes to question as to why we have on line nine of page four, "And other health-related services, et cetera." Et cetera, same as generally. What do we mean? Are we, are we, are we being broad enough that it then is going to, it's going to allow for that to occur? And I can see where the concerns are with regards to the restrictions. And I think that can be best served if we can, if we state that, "The MIP program shall reimburse the, the, the regional health centers if they're providing services for medical, dental, laboratory, X-ray, and pharmacy." If that is where we want to restrict it to, then let's restrict it. But if we keep continuing, we have, and other health-related services, et cetera, et cetera can be, can be construed as those other services that are already provided for free.
Can we take a one-minute break?
Okay. Thirty-one seconds for you.
Thirty-two seconds. Thank you, Madam Speaker, I appreciate the, the response from, from the author. My concern there, and I, it, then, it goes to question as to why we have on line nine of page four, "And other health-related services, et cetera." Et cetera, same as generally. What do we mean? Are we, are we, are we being broad enough that it then is going to, it's going to allow for that to occur? And I can see where the concerns are with regards to the restrictions. And I think that can be best served if we can, if we state that, "The MIP program shall reimburse the, the, the regional health centers if they're providing services for medical, dental, laboratory, X-ray, and pharmacy." If that is where we want to restrict it to, then let's restrict it. But if we keep continuing, we have, and other health-related services, et cetera, et cetera can be, can be construed as those other services that are already provided for free.
Can we take a one-minute break?
Okay. Thirty-one seconds for you.
Thirty-two seconds. Thank you, Madam Speaker, I appreciate the, the response from, from the author. My concern there, and I, it, then, it goes to question as to why we have on line nine of page four, "And other health-related services, et cetera." Et cetera, same as generally. What do we mean? Are we, are we, are we being broad enough that it then is going to, it's going to allow for that to occur? And I can see where the concerns are with regards to the restrictions. And I think that can be best served if we can, if we state that, "The MIP program shall reimburse the, the, the regional health centers if they're providing services for medical, dental, laboratory, X-ray, and pharmacy." If that is where we want to restrict it to, then let's restrict it. But if we keep continuing, we have, and other health-related services, et cetera, et cetera can be, can be construed as those other services that are already provided for free.
Can we take a one-minute break?
Okay. Thirty-one seconds for you.
Thirty-two seconds. Thank you, Madam Speaker, I appreciate the, the response from, from the author. My concern there, and I, it, then, it goes to question as to why we have on line nine of page four, "And other health-related services, et cetera." Et cetera, same as generally. What do we mean? Are we, are we, are we being broad enough that it then is going to, it's going to allow for that to occur? And I can see where the concerns are with regards to the restrictions. And I think that can be best served if we can, if we state that, "The MIP program shall reimburse the, the, the regional health centers if they're providing services for medical, dental, laboratory, X-ray, and pharmacy." If that is where we want to restrict it to, then let's restrict it. But if we keep continuing, we have, and other health-related services, et cetera, et cetera can be, can be construed as those other services that are already provided for free.
Can we take a one-minute break?
Okay. Thirty-one seconds for you.
Thirty-two seconds. Thank you, Madam Speaker, I appreciate the, the response from, from the author. My concern there, and I, it, then, it goes to question as to why we have on line nine of page four, "And other health-related services, et cetera." Et cetera, same as generally. What do we mean? Are we, are we, are we being broad enough that it then is going to, it's going to allow for that to occur? And I can see where the concerns are with regards to the restrictions. And I think that can be best served if we can, if we state that, "The MIP program shall reimburse the, the, the regional health centers if they're providing services for medical, dental, laboratory, X-ray, and pharmacy." If that is where we want to restrict it to, then let's restrict it. But if we keep continuing, we have, and other health-related services, et cetera, et cetera can be, can be construed as those other services that are already provided for free.
Can we take a one-minute break?
Okay. Thirty-one seconds for you.
Thirty-two seconds. Thank you, Madam Speaker, I appreciate the, the response from, from the author. My concern there, and I, it, then, it goes to question as to why we have on line nine of page four, "And other health-related services, et cetera." Et cetera, same as generally. What do we mean? Are we, are we, are we being broad enough that it then is going to, it's going to allow for that to occur? And I can see where the concerns are with regards to the restrictions. And I think that can be best served if we can, if we state that, "The MIP program shall reimburse the, the, the regional health centers if they're providing services for medical, dental, laboratory, X-ray, and pharmacy." If that is where we want to restrict it to, then let's restrict it. But if we keep continuing, we have, and other health-related services, et cetera, et cetera can be, can be construed as those other services that are already provided for free.
Can we take a one-minute break?
Okay. Thirty-one seconds for you.
Thirty-two seconds. Thank you, Madam Speaker, I appreciate the, the response from, from the author. My concern there, and I, it, then, it goes to question as to why we have on line nine of page four, "And other health-related services, et cetera." Et cetera, same as generally. What do we mean? Are we, are we, are we being broad enough that it then is going to, it's going to allow for that to occur? And I can see where the concerns are with regards to the restrictions. And I think that can be best served if we can, if we state that, "The MIP program shall reimburse the, the, the regional health centers if they're providing services for medical, dental, laboratory, X-ray, and pharmacy." If that is where we want to restrict it to, then let's restrict it. But if we keep continuing, we have, and other health-related services, et cetera, et cetera can be, can be construed as those other services that are already provided for free.
Can we take a one-minute break?
Okay. Thirty-one seconds for you.
Thirty-two seconds. Thank you, Madam Speaker, I appreciate the, the response from, from the author. My concern there, and I, it, then, it goes to question as to why we have on line nine of page four, "And other health-related services, et cetera." Et cetera, same as generally. What do we mean? Are we, are we, are we being broad enough that it then is going to, it's going to allow for that to occur? And I can see where the concerns are with regards to the restrictions. And I think that can be best served if we can, if we state that, "The MIP program shall reimburse the, the, the regional health centers if they're providing services for medical, dental, laboratory, X-ray, and pharmacy." If that is where we want to restrict it to, then let's restrict it. But if we keep continuing, we have, and other health-related services, et cetera, et cetera can be, can be construed as those other services that are already provided for free.
Can we take a one-minute break?
Okay. Thirty-one seconds for you.
Thirty-two seconds. Thank you, Madam Speaker, I appreciate the, the response from, from the author. My concern there, and I, it, then, it goes to question as to why we have on line nine of page four, "And other health-related services, et cetera." Et cetera, same as generally. What do we mean? Are we, are we, are we being broad enough that it then is going to, it's going to allow for that to occur? And I can see where the concerns are with regards to the restrictions. And I think that can be best served if we can, if we state that, "The MIP program shall reimburse the, the, the regional health centers if they're providing services for medical, dental, laboratory, X-ray, and pharmacy." If that is where we want to restrict it to, then let's restrict it. But if we keep continuing, we have, and other health-related services, et cetera, et cetera can be, can be construed as those other services that are already provided for free.
Can we take a one-minute break?
Okay. Thirty-one seconds for you.
Thirty-two seconds. Thank you, Madam Speaker, I appreciate the, the response from, from the author. My concern there, and I, it, then, it goes to question as to why we have on line nine of page four, "And other health-related services, et cetera." Et cetera, same as generally. What do we mean? Are we, are we, are we being broad enough that it then is going to, it's going to allow for that to occur? And I can see where the concerns are with regards to the restrictions. And I think that can be best served if we can, if we state that, "The MIP program shall reimburse the, the, the regional health centers if they're providing services for medical, dental, laboratory, X-ray, and pharmacy." If that is where we want to restrict it to, then let's restrict it. But if we keep continuing, we have, and other health-related services, et cetera, et cetera can be, can be construed as those other services that are already provided for free.
Can we take a one-minute break?
Okay. Thirty-one seconds for you.
Thirty-two seconds. Thank you, Madam Speaker, I appreciate the, the response from, from the author. My concern there, and I, it, then, it goes to question as to why we have on line nine of page four, "And other health-related services, et cetera." Et cetera, same as generally. What do we mean? Are we, are we, are we being broad enough that it then is going to, it's going to allow for that to occur? And I can see where the concerns are with regards to the restrictions. And I think that can be best served if we can, if we state that, "The MIP program shall reimburse the, the, the regional health centers if they're providing services for medical, dental, laboratory, X-ray, and pharmacy." If that is where we want to restrict it to, then let's restrict it. But if we keep continuing, we have, and other health-related services, et cetera, et cetera can be, can be construed as those other services that are already provided for free.
Can we take a one-minute break?
Okay. Thirty-one seconds for you.
Thirty-two seconds. Thank you, Madam Speaker, I appreciate the, the response from, from the author. My concern there, and I, it, then, it goes to question as to why we have on line nine of page four, "And other health-related services, et cetera." Et cetera, same as generally. What do we mean? Are we, are we, are we being broad enough that it then is going to, it's going to allow for that to occur? And I can see where the concerns are with regards to the restrictions. And I think that can be best served if we can, if we state that, "The MIP program shall reimburse the, the, the regional health centers if they're providing services for medical, dental, laboratory, X-ray, and pharmacy." If that is where we want to restrict it to, then let's restrict it. But if we keep continuing, we have, and other health-related services, et cetera, et cetera can be, can be construed as those other services that are already provided for free.
Can we take a one-minute break?
Okay. Thirty-one seconds for you.
Thirty-two seconds. Thank you, Madam Speaker, I appreciate the, the response from, from the author. My concern there, and I, it, then, it goes to question as to why we have on line nine of page four, "And other health-related services, et cetera." Et cetera, same as generally. What do we mean? Are we, are we, are we being broad enough that it then is going to, it's going to allow for that to occur? And I can see where the concerns are with regards to the restrictions. And I think that can be best served if we can, if we state that, "The MIP program shall reimburse the, the, the regional health centers if they're providing services for medical, dental, laboratory, X-ray, and pharmacy." If that is where we want to restrict it to, then let's restrict it. But if we keep continuing, we have, and other health-related services, et cetera, et cetera can be, can be construed as those other services that are already provided for free.
Can we take a one-minute break?
Okay. Thirty-one seconds for you.
Thirty-two seconds. Thank you, Madam Speaker, I appreciate the, the response from, from the author. My concern there, and I, it, then, it goes to question as to why we have on line nine of page four, "And other health-related services, et cetera." Et cetera, same as generally. What do we mean? Are we, are we, are we being broad enough that it then is going to, it's going to allow for that to occur? And I can see where the concerns are with regards to the restrictions. And I think that can be best served if we can, if we state that, "The MIP program shall reimburse the, the, the regional health centers if they're providing services for medical, dental, laboratory, X-ray, and pharmacy." If that is where we want to restrict it to, then let's restrict it. But if we keep continuing, we have, and other health-related services, et cetera, et cetera can be, can be construed as those other services that are already provided for free.
Can we take a one-minute break?
Okay. Thirty-one seconds for you.
Thirty-two seconds. Thank you, Madam Speaker, I appreciate the, the response from, from the author. My concern there, and I, it, then, it goes to question as to why we have on line nine of page four, "And other health-related services, et cetera." Et cetera, same as generally. What do we mean? Are we, are we, are we being broad enough that it then is going to, it's going to allow for that to occur? And I can see where the concerns are with regards to the restrictions. And I think that can be best served if we can, if we state that, "The MIP program shall reimburse the, the, the regional health centers if they're providing services for medical, dental, laboratory, X-ray, and pharmacy." If that is where we want to restrict it to, then let's restrict it. But if we keep continuing, we have, and other health-related services, et cetera, et cetera can be, can be construed as those other services that are already provided for free.
Can we take a one-minute break?
Okay. Thirty-one seconds for you.
Thirty-two seconds. Thank you, Madam Speaker, I appreciate the, the response from, from the author. My concern there, and I, it, then, it goes to question as to why we have on line nine of page four, "And other health-related services, et cetera." Et cetera, same as generally. What do we mean? Are we, are we, are we being broad enough that it then is going to, it's going to allow for that to occur? And I can see where the concerns are with regards to the restrictions. And I think that can be best served if we can, if we state that, "The MIP program shall
The legislature is back in session. And you, number 3. Okay, and I'll take 15. Okay, very good. So, Senator, well, we're back to, no, because, well, we want to, otherwise, because you made an objection, then I'm going to call for the vote, and if you?
Or I withdraw the objection.
Yes, and maybe can discuss what it is that will come after this.
So, Madam Speaker, I withdraw my objection to deleting Section 3 with the understanding that we will, that Senator Palacios will be proffering a standalone bill that will address DISIT and its role in training programs for people of disabilities throughout the government.
Thank you very much, Senator. So, no objections to the withdrawal of the objections, so ordered. Okay, clerks, were you able to get that then? Oh, no, that's it. No, that one's, okay, on now, and let me check my list, okay. So, yes, Senator Frank Blasch, you're next on the list. No, no, no.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in support of actually the legislation.
Oh, wait, 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 one second, I'm sorry. Yeah, see, the clerk is reminding me. Okay, Frank, are you right, that's the reason why I didn't want you to talk, it's because we, we did the, no objections to withdrawal of her objections, now the, on the motion to delete Section 3, then without any objections, so ordered. Thank you very much. Now, Senator Frank Blasch Jr., you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in support of the legislation, and I appreciate the conversations and the discussions that occurred during the recess to actually to make it the intent, and so that we can truly address and deal with the intent. My, my issue, though, is with language that is contained on the colored, and let me refer because I'm looking at the colored version. On Page 3, line 16, actually, if you go back, but if you read, "No person shall be appointed a corrections officer who has not established satisfactory evidence of the ability to recognize and understand persons with disabilities." I, Madam Speaker, I think there's, there's a little issue. I have a little issue with regards to the ability to recognize. When you're talking about persons with disabilities, you're talking about individuals with a wide range of maladies that may not necessarily be evident, you know, even to a trained eye. And I just don't want to get into a position where, you know, somebody be very technical with regards to this, the certification or satisfactory of an individual's ability to recognize an individual with disabilities. And so, but I understand what this section is trying to do, is trying to basically provide and to ensure that these individuals have proper training to be able to, to deal with individuals, and to understand individuals with disabilities. My concern, there's the recognition of it. It may be too broad, too ambiguous, and actually too extreme for a training module to be able to provide that, you're looking at many years of being able to provide, to do this, to be able to satisfy that requirement. In some cases, you can't. So with the word, I don't know whether we, if we should, if we can strike out the word "recognize" and actually have it see of the ability to understand and deal with persons with disabilities. I don't even know if "deal" is the proper, proper nomenclature for it, but.
We're going to take a brief recess. Blasch, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, then I'd like to be able to, on Page, now I'm looking at Page 3 of the colored copy.
No, let's work with the original, please, because that's what clerks have in legal counsel. It's on Page 3, line 18.
Okay, Page 3, line 18. For line 18, now to read, of the ability to understand and work with?
Okay, so we're going to delete, recognize, and?
Understand, and make it understand and work with.
And work with. Clerks and legal counsel, do you have that? Any objections? No, no objections? Okay, Senator Guthers acquit this to this, so ordered. I have the vice speaker who would like to speak on the motion. I, I'm sorry, I didn't have your name on this one, but I will put you on. Okay, vice speaker? H before handsomeness?
Madam Speaker, I hate to do this, but I want to make sure that we don't make the same mistake twice. I note that this is going to be requiring that there's different skills for this Department of Corrections Officers. I wanted on the record, or at least ask the sponsor to yield to the question of what would be the fiscal impact of this bill? Will this cause us to have to increase their salaries or to have any, any kind of fiscal implications? Because their DOC is pretty short already, as it is, and I looked at the fiscal note that's in the, in the, in the committee report, and it says zero. But we've been burned with a zero before, and I just want to make sure that it's on the record that someone asked about the fiscal impact, and that we were assured that there's not going to be any increased salaries as a result of these new qualifications.
Senator Palacios, do you yield to the question?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Well, first of all, Madam Speaker, the certification is separate from, from the training and those things. It can be had before applying, you can have it later. The point is that upon, upon hiring, if the individual is to be hired, that that individual should present at that point a certificate of completion of the training. Now, whether it would affect then the compensation level, I, I personally, I don't think so. The reason is that, right now, the line of work put them in that situation where they deal with this, but they are not adequately equipped to deal with this properly, we have seen cases. And the intent of the bill is to make sure that our officers out there are equipped to handle what they're already mandated to handle and to deal with, with public. And so, you know, through times, of course, we have realized now with the continuing increase in the participation of persons with disabilities into the communities' normal life, I think it's time that our officers are equipped with this, with this ability to be able to handle this in a proper way and avoid, so additional compensation probably at that point when that comes, that can be considered later by DOA, which, by the way, DOA still has the authority through a AAA process to look at those things and say, well, maybe we can adjust this, maybe not at that point. But this is just one requirement, again, that will provide them additional ability to do what they're already mandated to do, which is to interact with the public and provide emergency response and so forth. So that's, that's the best that I can explain. I cannot be sure whether this, this would, you know, imply additional adjustment and Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator, good enough answer for me. Mr. Vice Speaker, you still have the floor.
I just wanted to get that on the record, because I support this. I really do think it's imperative that all of us, including us in here, have that ability to, and be able to, to do what we're asking everybody else to do. So I, but I just wanted to be able to ask the question about the fiscal implication, and I applaud Senator Palacios for admitting that there may be, but at least it's been asked, and if we're asked about it, why we voted for something that we, we at least know, or at least have as much information as we should, with the fiscal note from BBMR saying zero.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Speaker. We're going to take a brief recess. First back in session, I recognize Senator Tom Ada.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I certainly rise in support of the bill, but if the author would yield, I do have a question on the page three, there, item F, on line 13. It says that no person shall be appointed corrections officer until he has established satisfactory evidence of having undergone this training and has this understanding and ability to work with persons with disabilities. So before you are able to enter into the program, you've got to have gone through this training, which then raises the question of, for those who are already incumbents, employees already, and it says that, you know, within six months following enactment this act, they shall submit to the Department of Administration such certification as required herein. It's, it's not clear whether DO, Department of Corrections is going to be responsible for providing the training, or if that incumbent corrections officer is going to have to go out and, and obtain this training. And if that six months lapses, is this basis then to get terminated? So it's not clear. So on the one hand, you cannot even get into the program until you've gone through that. But if, for retention purposes, what are the implications if this six months, you know, we don't, if the individual does not meet the six-month time period?
Senator, do you yield to the question?
Yes, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, the, this was during discussion, and that's why you see the underline there, is that we have to deal with incumbents. Maybe six months is not long enough, maybe no longer than 18 months, for example, as, you know, within this 18 months, but no later than 18 months following the enactment, so that that way, of course, the training can be had. Again, the training can be conducted internally or by a private vendor. A training that will be approved in a separate bill that we're going to do, that's approved by DISIT. And whoever, I understand that DISIT would be the signatory on any of this training, whether it's administered privately or internally by the department, it's still DISIT would be the signatory. It's just like outsourcing it, some of it, but then the, the DISIT would be the, the signatory. I think it, there's a need to do, to require also incumbent, but maybe six months is not long enough, maybe face it out. We don't even know whether 16 hours would be sufficient. If it's 16 hours would be sufficient, they can do this, of course, internally, as long as the program is approved by DISIT. So we can do, I guess, 18 months? No later, no later than 18 months following the enactment of this. Then that would probably would be a better language and would provide adequate time.
Senator Tom Ada, did he sufficiently answer your question?
Well, not, not exactly, Madam Speaker, because it's really not a question of, can we get it done in six months or 18 months, more so than what is the implication of not getting it done? You know, it may be a choice for the Department of, do we, I mean, you know, do we, do we divert limited resources to provide the training to the, I guess they have quite a number of corrections officers there. So, so it, it kind of leaves it hanging as to what is the implication to the, because if there's, if there's no, if there's no, if there's no, you know, impact, if there's no ramification for not having gone through it, then it's probably not going to happen anyway. Unless we put language to the effect that, you know, failure to obtain the necessary certification shall not be basis for dismissal. And if nothing else, then that makes it very clear that this will, that, that, you know, not going through the training will not result in, in a dismissal. So, so I would then make the amendment that on line five, to add the sentence that...
Are you working with the original bill, with, not the color-coded one?
I'm using the colored.
Okay, we've got to work with the other one that the clerks, so, it's the same, but we just, we've got to work with the original.
Page four, page four, line, on line five, at the end, I would then add the sentence that failure to obtain the necessary certification shall not be basis for termination of employment. So a, a good director, a good leader, will make every effort to ensure that his employees receive the training. But circumstances may be that he just won't be able to do that, maybe shortage of manpower, just does not have the budget, maybe DISIT can't come up with the program in a timely manner. Whatever the case is, it should not be the, the corrections officer that should suffer the consequences for that.
So your amendment then is on page four, at the end of line seven.
Line five, line five, Madam Speaker.
Oh.
On the colored, on the colored version.
No, I'm working with the original.
What word, okay.
And the original, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. It's, it's at the end of line seven, and it's a new sentence, failure to obtain necessary certification shall not be the basis for termination of employment.
Shall not result?
Shall not result.
In the dismissal?
Result, well.
In the termination of employment.
That's why I need to have it in writing. Wait, wait, wait. Because we're writing this down, Senator Ada, so I, we need the clerks, we need to get it. So shall not res, see, it's either result or be the basis. That's what you said to me earlier, now that's what I wrote.
Shall not result.
Shall not result in what? In termination?
Termination of employment.
Shall, in?
So if you can't get in, you can't get in without the certification, you can't get booted out, because you don't have the certification either.
On the ADA amendment. Senator Guthers, and then Senator Yamashita.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, it just occurred to me that there's another entity that can do this kind of training, and that's up at the university. The, what's the name of the entity? Cedars, yeah, Cedars. So there's more than one option, and I'm wondering if we should be limiting this to just DISIT. Cedars does training for folks that, that need special assistance.
But that's a different section. So I, I can get back to you on that, because you can go to page three, then line 22, if you want to make your amendment to add Cedars. But specifically on, on Senator Ada's amendment is that termination should not be the result of failing to get this certification. Backwards, I know, Senator Ada. I know those aren't new words, but that's, that's why we'd like, Peter, please write your amendment. Senator Yamashita, on the ADA amendment.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. On the ADA amendment, I, I think that amendment takes away the teeth of what we're actually trying to do here. I'm not sure this is in line of how I'm supposed to be doing this, but, you know, Madam Speaker, it was just on January 10th, we had 40 community leaders together in a think tank, and a lot of these issues were actually discussed. And so we do have Guam Cedars, but DISIT is really kind of like the umbrella at this time. There's also POST, who determines training and certification standards for our officers. And so we had talked about how we really need to relook at those standards and, and training requirements. So, but specifically on the amendment that we're talking about right now, I just believe that if we don't require it, it ain't going to happen. If we don't say this is a priority item, it isn't going to happen. And we just celebrated a year of Jared Lofner in Arizona, an anniversary. We have our own Darson, Rakemisik, and Gigo. We have our own share of, of folks, and we really need to get a handle on it. We can't go killing people because they have mental illness. We need to require that our first responders have a full understanding and awareness and a capability to work with those of us who do have disabilities. So I'm addressing the amendment that really I feel will take the teeth away from what the author of this bill is attempting to do. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator. On the Tom Ada amendment, so anybody else would like to speak on it? Senator Ada, Senator, you may close on, on your amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I, I think the retiring speaker certainly raises a good point about, you know, if, if you just say, if you don't undergo the training, no consequence to it. But we also got to be careful about unfunded mandates, requiring departments to, I know, put their people through all kinds of training, and if we do that, then if he's going to have, if he's already shorthanded, and he has to release people to go get the training, he has to incur overtime, there's expenses that's associated with it. So if we want to really make it, make certain that the training does occur and is provided to these people, then we've got to give them the funding to be able to carry out this mandate. You know, so, so it's not that we're, we're, we're trying to take away the teeth. I think we're just trying to be, be pragmatic about the whole matter. So I would just ask my colleagues to consider this, and given the financial constraints that our government is having to live with, that let's not make ultimately then the unintended consequence of an employee, you know, threatening his, his livelihood because the department was not able to provide the training. Thank you.
There being an objection, all those then in favor of the Tom Ada amendment, please raise your hand. The amendment failed.
Does anyone still have a word?
Yes, you do. Even if I counted you, Senator, it would not have made it pass.
Madam Speaker, I, I have a concern about, on page, on page two, line, line 23 and 24, it says that no person shall be appointed a corrections officer who has not established satisfactory evidence of qualifications by passing a physical examination, which shall include a physical agility test. I think, I think there's, there's significant difference between being physically fit and being physically agile. I feel that I'm physically fit. My heart rate is within, I guess, the norms and, you know, all that stuff. But I don't consider myself physically agile. You know, I can't at the drop of a dime, you know, hit the ground, roll, pick up again, run, drop, and, and that, in my mind, is what physical agility is. So I, I think that, that maybe I would just proffer the amendment that on line 24, basically, we require that the individual pass a physical examination, that he is physically fit, that he can carry a weapon and, and, you know, march up and down the corridor and whatnot. But that we should probably delete, I would move to delete the lang, the, the phrase on line 24, which shall include a physical agility test. I would, I would venture to say that there's probably many people in here who are physically fit but are not physically agile. And so because of that, I, I proffer this amendment, Madam Speaker.
On the Tom Ada amendment, then, on page two, line 24, to delete the words, which shall include a physical agility test, I have Senator Guthers and Senator Palacios.
Madam Speaker, I, maybe it's, it's a, it's a, no, the word agility, but that's opposed to fitness.
Supposed to fitness. Maybe that's the issue, the word agility versus fitness. But to remove that section would in fact change the requirements for peace officers. You have to pass a physical fitness slash agility test. That's a preliminary requirement. That's part of the application process. So I think we need to be careful here. Now, I'm not certain about changing the word from agility to fitness, but we need to be consistent with the Department of Administration requirements and evaluation criteria for applicants, for police officers, corrections officers, et cetera, et cetera. And if we change this language and remove that particular statement, then we're changing the requirements that peace officers have to have in order to be able to serve. So I, maybe my colleague here, Senator Palacios, can also speak to this, but this would concern me. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Guthers. Senator Palacios, on the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I, I don't understand why this is in yellow, but I know for a fact that entry-level position for correction, for GPD, for FIRE, the term used by DOA is actually physical agility test. And this is a certain number of push-ups, maybe a run. This is not just a physical check with a physician. It, you go to Paseo, since by time, back in 1969, and I know, they still do it nowadays. That's part of the so-called physical fitness test. That's one phase of the three tests for the entry-level, the RIN test, and then the physical test, which is the physical agility, and of course, maybe physical fitness, but it's not just a, a sitting down physical examination. It's more than that. And of course, the, the, the third test is of course the interview test. So this would have been marked blue, and this is DOA requirement. And the, the proper terminology is, is physical agility test. So I can check that one more time, but even if this is deleted, it, it does not, of course, preclude DOA from doing it, which they're doing it now, unless it is said here that, that it is restricted from, from being done, then now it would alter the current practice. So removal of this would not, I guess, would not change the current practice. But the current practice with FIRE, the, the taking of the agility test. It's actually a few tests, physical tests by the, you know, by the DOA. That's my comment on that. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Palacios. And agile really is the ability to move with quick and easy, and easily, a quick, resourceful, and adaptable character. Those are the definitions that we have for agility. So on the amendment then, and since there is an objection...
Let me, let me close.
You want to close? Okay, Senator Ada.
And so it may very well be, Madam Speaker, that really, you know, the debate here is, which is the proper term to use? which is the proper term to use? Physical agility test, which means that a muscle quickness, ability to get down, get up, versus physical fitness, which includes muscular strength, muscular endurance, cardiovascular endurance, flexibility, and body composition. So that, you know, physical fitness has a totally different meaning from physical agility. So maybe if it places the body, maybe I should withdraw the motion to delete that phrase to include physical agility test. And instead, then, I would proffer the, I would propose that we change the word agility and use the term fitness, which is, I think, what we're really looking for.
You were going, you were closing, and there was an objection.
Right.
So you want me now to call for the vote? You're done with your?
Well, I think, I mean, I've heard some of the discussions, and maybe what might be a more appropriate thing is to withdraw my amendment to delete that phrase, and instead just really change the word.
Then that's what you need to do, because we can't just go back to the same thing, the same amendment over and over. So.
Okay, all right, okay.
Will withdraw?
I'll withdraw my amendment.
Without any objections? So ordered. Okay, so Senator, you still have the floor.
And I would like to now proffer an amendment on line twenty-
Four. Line twenty-four, page two.
Line twenty-four, page two, to change the word agility to fitness test.
On the amendment, then, is to change the word agility to fitness. Are there no objections?
Objection.
Okay. There is an objection, so I'm going to call for the vote. Oh, you want to speak? Okay, Senator, you can speak. Yes. Senator, please turn on your mic so we can hear you.
Sorry. I don't think we should do this without consulting DOA. You're going to change every job description there is when it comes to these, these tests for peace officers. So we need to consult DOA.
Senator, you don't think that when page, on line twenty-six, where it says standards to be established by DOC and DOA would?
No. You're going to set a precedent here, and then they're going to get challenged from different people applying for different peace office positions, because this is going to set the precedent, that one word. So we need to clarify this, Madam Speaker.
Okay, so, and procedurally, yes, there is an objection, so I will call for the vote. But the mover of the amendment has just stepped out, so we'll take a brief recess. I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor of the amended, of the amendment to delete agility to fitness, please raise your hand. The amendment failed.
Can I change the word tomato to tomorrow?
Thank you very much, Senator Ada.
What are my actions?
Okay, so on the main motion, does anybody else would like to speak? There being none, do you want to close, Senator? Say, on the motion, then, to send two ninety-six dash thirty-one to third reading file without any objections, so ordered. Let me see. Okay, we can take one more. Resolution two ninety-nine, Senator Esposito.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that resolution two ninety-nine dash three-one be placed in the voting file with some discussion.
Please proceed.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker and colleagues. I call your attention, resolution two ninety-nine, which seeks to formalize a relationship between the people of Guam and the Filipino people, namely those who reside in the Pangasinan province. You know, this legislature has time and again recognized the wonderful relationship that the Filipinos have shared with the people of Guam, beginning after World War II, when they sent over not only their engineers, but their skilled workers to help us rebuild our island after that terrible period in history. And they continue to do so, Madam Speaker, by sending us qualified teachers and nurses, as well as foreign workers, that augment our current labor requirements for any kind of work, whether it be private sector or even military-related. Certainly, as citizens of the United States, we always want the workers to come from the United States, if not from Guam and the neighboring area. But we recognize that absent our ability to recruit from within, we also reach out to foreign countries to get the skilled workers that we need. This resolution also builds on a previous rules resolution two five six, which we adopted in October fourth of two thousand and eleven, which authorized the exploration of a sister city relationship. And I'm happy to report to the body that Senator Guthers and I were able to go to Pangasinan and meet with them, together with the representatives of our local federation of the Pangasinan community of Guam. And when we were there, Madam Speaker, we were really very well received, and the provincial board adopted a similar resolution, and is also moving toward adopting this resolution, similar to resolution two ninety-nine, which will formalize this relationship. As you know, the Pangasinanese that live on Guam, they work very hard as an organization and do a lot by way of contributing to providing scholarships locally. They've also have done many civic projects here on Guam, Madam Speaker. But they've also recently held a medical mission to Pangasinan, which brought with them over three hundred thousand dollars worth of medical supplies, prescription medication, as well as doctors to do onsite surgeries for thousands of residents there. And that brought with them sixty volunteers, all from Guam, Madam Speaker, as well as medical professionals, to help augment that, that opportunity for them there. And so this resolution not only recognizes the bond that we share with our Filipino brothers and sisters, but it also recognizes an opportunity for this continued goodwill to be more, to be memorialized and to be set in stone. And I'll tell you, I take these sister city relationships very seriously. And as Senator Guthers and Senator Tom Ada and I, and I'm hoping that we will be joined by every single member of this legislature, when we adopt this resolution, we will recognize ways that we can further exchange this goodwill of ideas, camaraderie, as well as commerce for the benefit of both the people of Guam and the people of the Philippines. And so I ask for our colleagues' consideration and for unanimous support for this resolution.
Thank you, Senator. On the motion, on the motion, then, to send resolution two ninety-nine to third reading file without objections, so ordered. Senator Munia Barnes, you're recognized on bill number three oh nine.
That's, uh, maybe I-
Uh, oh, three oh nine, I'm so sorry. Did you change? Ada?
I have one.
Senator Tony C. Ada. You know, I can't tell you guys apart anymore. Tom Ada, you're recognized on bill number three oh nine dash thirty-one. Dispense out.
Madam Speaker, I move that bill three oh nine dash three-one, as amended by the Committee on Appropriations, Taxation, Public Debt, Banking, and Insurance, Retirement, and Land, be moved to the third reading file, and I'd like to speak on it.
Conseguir.
Dismusi. Madam Speaker, bill three oh nine, really what it does is it, it just, it clarifies, I believe, what was originally intended when benefits, certain benefits were given to veterans who live on our island. For example, right now, the benefits that are provided to them is that the fee for the driver's license is waived, the annual license and registration fee for veterans who are determined to be a hundred percent disabled are waived, the fees that are assessed in that vehicle registration is also waived, and the recycling fee that is assessed in the vehicle registration is also waived. And then we also have a benefit right now that veterans are given a five-point preference when applying for a government job. Now, unfortunately, what has happened is that Department of Administration, Department of Revenue and Taxation, has interpreted the law to mean that it's a one-time application of the benefit. You get your first driver's license, when you come back for renewal the following year, you now have to pay like everybody else. With the same thing with the vehicle registration. You renew it this year, when you come back next year, you don't have the benefit of the fee waiver. Of course, it's very clear in the law, though, about the five-point preference, that again, it is, it says very clearly that it is a one-time benefit. What bill three oh nine does is it, is it says that for as long as the individual maintains his veteran status, that this benefit should be a continuing benefit. So the amendments that are being made, as you'll see in section two, is that the fee for an operator, operators or chauffeur's license is waived upon initial issuance and subsequent renewal of a license. In section three, it says that the annual license and registration fee shall be waived upon initial issuance and subsequent renewal of the vehicle license. And so it does the same thing in section four, that it's applicable upon initial, initial issuance and subsequent renewal, and the same thing with, in section five. On section six, what it does is it says that the five-point preference is added to an applicant's passing score. And the way the law reads right now, it's really kind of vague, because it says that it's added if the applicant receives a minimum passing score. So it's been interpreted, there's been occasions that Department of Administration, where it's been interpreted, that if the applicant receives a score of seventy, then he gets a five-point preference. If he receives a score of eighty, then he doesn't receive the five-point preference. So the amendment in section six says, if the guy, if the individual, the veteran, receives a score of either seventy or higher, then the five-point benefit, he's, he's given an additional five points for that initial job application and subsequent applications for employment within the government. So, Madam Speaker, that's what bill three oh nine does. I do have some amendments, some minor amendments that I would like to make, and it's being passed around. Actually, there's about one, two, three, four amendments, and it's all on one page, back and forth. But basically, what it does is if you take a look on section two, line nine, page two there, and this was brought to my attention, that, you know, some, some veterans, they don't, they don't have a car. What they drive around with is a motorcycle. But the way the law reads is that the fee waiver is just for an operator or chauffeur license, which is different from a motorcycle license. So the amendment, first amendment, then, that I would like to proffer is on page two, line nine, is to make the necessary changes there to read that the fee for an operator, comma, chauffeur, comma, or motorcycle license is waived upon initial issuance. So that's the first amendment that I would like to make, Madam Speaker.
On the amendment, no objections? So ordered.
Madam Speaker, the second amendment I'd like to make is, again, on page two, on lines twenty-one and twenty-three. And, and again, it's a minor amendment. Right now, it says that the fee shall be waived for one non-commercial passenger vehicle, which includes small sedans. Well, what if I have a, what, so I'm, my- So, my amendment then is to delete the word "small," and that the fee waiver really is for a sedan, for a coupe, station wagons, and what's not included in here is that pickup trucks and motorcycles are also eligible for this fee waiver. And then, we delete the phrase "manufactured primarily for the purpose of carrying passengers" and including those passengers. I don't know what, why that was put in there, but I'm proposing in the amendment, as is shown there, to just delete that phrase. But the important part is that we're including pickup trucks and motorcycles.
There, well, there was a reason for that language.
I'm sorry?
There was a reason for that language, yeah.
I don't know.
We'll take a recess.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Going back to page 2, lined 20, starting on lines 21, let me withdraw that initial amendment that I made, and the corrected amendment then would read on line 20, starting on line 21, "non-commercial passenger vehicle, which includes sedans, coupes, station wagons, pickup trucks, or motorcycles." And then, you'll pick up "manufactured primarily for the purpose..."
And...
Pickup trucks or motorcycles.
Yes, and maybe, you need some other word there, "and other mode of transportation, rather manufactured primarily for the purposes of..." You know what I mean? Because you don't, you're not limiting it to just very specific, but other modes of transportation. So then, but this one does, this one got one, it's, so how do you want to attach that then to, can you see what I'm trying to say?
Yeah, so I think maybe just adding, you know, the category pickup trucks or motorcycles, I think, will address the concerns that were raised.
Or, better yet, is that leave the station wagons manufactured primarily for, and before station wagons, put pickup trucks or motorcycles and station wagons manufactured primarily for the purposes of, you see what I'm trying to say?
That'll work.
Okay, so clerks, the language would be on page 2, line 21, delete "small," then it would read "includes sedans, coupes, pickup trucks or motorcycles, and station wagons."
Or, or station wagons.
Okay? And/or, you got it? So, on that amendment, no objections? So ordered.
Madam Speaker, on page 3, that similar amendment will also apply on lines 10, starting on line 10 through 12.
Okay, so the same language as what we had passed on page 2, clerks, so also legal counsel?
That's right, I'm sorry. Yeah, lines 10 and 11 there, it would be the same language, which then will read, "which includes sedans, coupes, pickups, pickup trucks, motorcycles, and station wagons."
Motorcycle, and, yes, and station wagons.
Manufactured primarily.
Okay.
And then again, on page...
On that amendment, without any objections? So ordered.
Then, on the same page, on line 25, again, the same amendment, which we would read then, which includes sedans, coupes, pickup trucks, motorcycles, and station wagons.
Same language again? And, no, it'll be "and." What it is, is, okay, for, just for the clerk's purpose, to make sure that includes sedans, coupes, pickup trucks, motorcycles, and station wagons manufactured primarily for the purpose of carrying passengers, and so on. Senator Ada?
That's it, Madam Speaker.
Okay, so clerks, do we have it? Legal counsel? Can you please make sure we get the corrected version then for the clerks, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
But, anyway, so on that amendment, the same amendment then, really, for page 2 and 3, and all the different lines, so, without any objections? So ordered. Thank you, Senator Ada, that, okay, we did four. Okay.
That's it. Thank you.
On the main motion? There being none, Senator, do you want to close? Do you want to send it out? So, a motion to send 309-31 to third reading file without any objections? So ordered. We have bill 327, and I recognize the author, Senator Mano Silva Typhren.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'll make it quick, being that it's just about 5:00. This bill essentially establishes what's called a gymnasium revolving fund in five of our villages. As you may know, there are two other villages that have such a fund in existence. It was established by public law, 2345, and what this, what the Gymnasium Revolving Fund does is it allows village mayors to collect funds, revenue for the use of gymnasiums and some of their sports facilities. As you know, there, a lot of our village gyms are in such a state of disrepair, and the village mayors aren't able to find the resources to make the necessary repairs to our gymnasiums. So, what this would do in allowing the village mayors to establish this fund, would allow the five villages that don't have a gymnasium revolving fund to collect fees and put them in a set-aside fund, so that they have funds readily available when they need to make necessary repairs. The villages that currently have such a fund include Agania Heights and Timuning, but we're looking at establishing the Gymnasium Revolving Fund in the villages of Aget, Dedodo, Talafofo, Gigo, and Jotnia. We did work with the mayors in establishing, putting this bill together. We did get their full support. This is something that they look forward to, because they do see the need to have a separate fund, so that they can tap into it quickly whenever they need to make those repairs at the village gyms. We do want to give the village mayors more power and ability to act when needed, so I ask my colleagues to support this measure. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, Senator Munia Barnes?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I stand in support of this bill 327-31 COR, and I'd like to thank the author, Mano Silva Typhren, for taking the initiative to work closely with the mayors and work closely with the mayors who have the gyms in their gymnasium, and making sure that there is a funding available to help assist in the repairs of the gyms that have literally been utilized by all the village residents, and not just by the village residents, but those who also visit the different villages who have gyms to be able to play that. I want to share with you, Madam Speaker, that I was just in the village of Agania Heights yesterday, and let alone from having literally five, six, seven, eight, nine, five softball games yesterday, and the village gymnasium from Agania Heights was utilized for zumba, basketball, and volleyball, and trying to divide the different areas of the gymnasium for those different programs, and knowing that there's a need to upgrade and to, not just upgrade and refurbish, but to just get these programs going, I think that this will truly be a positive for the mayor. So, I want to thank the good author for introducing this legislation, and I think it will assist the mayors in the needs for their resources for their village gymnasiums. So, thank you for giving me the opportunity to support this effort.
You're welcome, Senator. Anyone who would like to speak in the main motion? Senator Typhren, you may close.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Recognizing the efforts of the retiring speaker, I do want to say that she is a staunch proponent and supporter of the village mayors, and her efforts are very much noticed in the community and in this body. So, I would like to add her as a second co-sponsor.
On the motion, without any objections?